Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the formal session of today's meeting. At this point, we're going to ask Louis Jones to say the invocation for us.
Mr. Powerhead, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are always near us and beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our great city. Guide us and direct us in the decisions we make that may be accepted and pleasant in your sight. We pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen. And pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Rouse is the only one absent tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci.
Present.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, could I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of November 10th, 2020, and November 17th, 2020? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse is absent. Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of ten to zero, approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to open a public hearing, number one, on the declaration and sale of excess property, approximately 2.812 acres at the intersection of Princess Anne and South Witch Duck Road, formerly Kempsville Road.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Ms. Messner.
Good evening. Declaration and sale of excess city property. How much time do y'all spend looking for excess property? There's no excess property. We have flooding, high-density projects all over the place, crumbling roads, and there might be more people here if the city's website was updated and it didn't still say Building 1. Everyone doesn't know. Plus, you haven't fixed the fact that the school board has meetings the same night. It's a pretty easy fix. The school board should meet on Wednesdays, and then you can have your Tuesdays. But this interferes with due process, and another person brought it to my attention that the full agenda, which is 400 pages for tonight, was down Monday. There's no excuse for the full agenda to be down when we only get it on Fridays, sometime Friday. And everyone who reads the emails, or your staff that read the emails, I've addressed, you know, due process, fixing the events calendar, but I'm opposed to this. You use air tax dollars to buy land. This is almost three acres at the intersection of Princess Anne and Witch Duck. It was taken to fix traffic problems, and now you want to sell it for mixed-use, high-density projects, which will be more traffic. You shouldn't be in the business of buying property and then selling it or leasing it for a dollar a year to select developers. Okay, thank you.
And I forgot to mention, if I could ask kindly, request people in the gallery that everybody please be seated, and if there is an overflow room right across the way. So I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, the second proposed property tax -- any other speakers on that item?
No, sir.
Okay, number two are the proposed property tax exemptions. Is it okay to read each one of them right now?
It's one public hearing.
One public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, that would be, let's see, on the East Coast Volleyball Club and the Hospice and Palliative Care of Tidewater, Love All Warriors included, One Step Ministries, The Pink Ride Incorporated, and Trails of Purpose. Any speakers?
One speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening. The last time I brought up these tax exemptions, we have $3 billion debt. You're not paying down the debt, and you continue all these projects. Some of the projects that people used to bid on, and they paid for it, they're CIP, capital improvement. And some of y'all need to pay attention when you vote, because some of you have taken money from these developers at the oceanfront and other places. Okay, a volleyball club. I don't want my money paying for a volleyball club. Hospice and Palliative Care of Tidewater. That's private. We can't be funding all these nonprofits. Love All Warriors Inc. You know, does anybody have any idea how many nonprofits there are to help the military? I think the Navy should take care of its own, and I think the city should take care of its own. One Step Ministries. I'm sorry, but I cannot see tax exemption for anyone else during the pandemic and when we have debt. It's absolutely insane. Pink Ride, I don't know or care. Trails of Purpose, it doesn't matter. If somebody can't make enough money to keep their project going, there's too many nonprofits. You go to the grocery store, do you want to donate to this? Do you want to round it off to that? We're struggling financially. Y'all cannot give air money to nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers signed up. Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of the public hearings. Now, we do have a speaker.
Comment on these. I just noticed that the Hospice and Palliative Care and the Pink Ride, both, question number eight on the application for exemption, they both, both of those have an answer to yes to question number eight. I would not approve them if the real answer was yes. I suspect they've answered those in error, and I would hope they could amend those two applications just to change their answers to no instead of yes. Question number eight, Pink Ride and Palliative Care, the question is, does the organization have a rule or regulation unlawfully discriminates? That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tower. Thank you for that observation. Yeah, Mr. Moss.
I did ask that the city attorney's office provide us in the packet the IRS filings for the last three years, for those that have it, for all these nonprofits, so that we could do a verification between what's been filed and what they've been telling the IRS.
Okay, thank you. Okay, given that we have a speaker for some of the consent agenda, I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representative of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call those who, individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item they have been registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. Finally, I call all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, Madam Clerk, yes?
I just need to clarify with the clerk, based on the revised speakers list you provided. So it appears ordinances, resolutions are the same under planning. Did you say J six? Is that, I can't tell where the names are on here.
That's correct, J six, we need to pull.
So J six is going to be heard?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And no other changes?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, could we call the speaker?
For the consent agenda?
For the consent agenda, yes.
Ms. Messner has signed up on all items. So the ones that are being pulled, Ms. Messner, are item five, and item one is to defer to December the 8th, and item three is to defer indefinitely. Would you like to come to the podium? I'm sorry, the lectern. They'll have to open a public hearing for planning, Ms. Messner, so we'll start with the ordinances and resolutions.
Okay. Okay, even though one is pulled, as long as it's on the agenda, we can still speak. It's temporary pay adjustment, and I think we need more time to discuss this. We need more advance notice to read the agenda, and we need more time to reach our council members. I email all of you all the time, and I do get a couple replies, but it's usually thank you, and we'll look into it, not any information and not one of you. You know, I've suggested that you have town halls. I don't care if you want to have them, you know, virtual, but you should be, you should be answering questions of the public. Okay, two. Grant non-exclusive franchise agreement, Sims Holding LLC, to install, operate, maintain network facilities and telecommunications services in the public streets and right-of-ways. You're continually giving away access to the public and the public streets, and you're reinventing the entire city. People can't even park or drive on the streets. You're allowing parking lots. Who keeps banging? I don't know what that banging is. Pardon? Banging? I'm not banging anything.
Or waving your card. It hits the mic, and it's very sensitive.
Nope. Okay. So I oppose these grants, ordinance to grant a non-exclusive franchise to private developers, and I think Moss talked about how much they're paying for it. It doesn't matter. We need access to our city. Okay, three. Did you say three was pulled?
Deferred.
Deferred, okay. Authorize the city manager to execute a ground lease for 420 square feet known as Atlantic Avenue and replace the Oceanside Marriott Hotel Monument sign. We've spent over, well over $42 million for the Cavalier project, and it was supposed to be to save the hotel. There's two floors of hard liquor distillery. There's three hotels, a Marriott and Ambassador, and you're closing streets. So, you know, ground lease, you know, like the 31st Street Hotel, the same developer. He has, on Atlantic Avenue, he has valet parking, he has use of Atlantic Avenue. Okay, four. Authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city's right-of-way known as Southern Boulevard, formerly known as Norfolk Southern Rail Line. 30 feet utility easements for 72-inch chain link fence, chain link gates, concrete barriers, a gravel area, and two metal tanks. This is a city right-of-way, and it's going to be commercialized. Okay, five, we're skipping. I'm glad there's speakers here. Six, ordinance to establish resort management office. We've had resort management office for decades. Appropriate, and the salaries are obscene. $1,176,505 of tourist investment program tip fund. That's all the people that go to the light show and, I forget what it is, at the aquarium. All that tax money goes back to the city to pay down the debts for all these projects that you're going to have. And transfer $361,287 and nine FTEs. I think it would be nice even for the agenda brief to put what FTEs are. There's so many abbreviations, it's hard to know what they are. Within the 2020-2021 budget, which we've already, Mr. Moss has brought up before, once the budget's settled, and authorize six more FTEs, facilitate initiatives at the resort area, and coordinate city code enforcement. Seven. Like I said, the city. You appoint your buddies that win bids and work on projects to the resort advisory, to the RAC. You appoint people to planning. We're no longer allowed to speak when you appoint whoever you want, including each other. Y'all should be responsive to the citizens and not take advice from, we're the stockholders, stakeholders, not the developers. Okay. Seven. Transfer $200,000 from the General Fund Reserve for contingencies 2020-2021, human services operating budget, and hire a consultant. Don't any of y'all, aren't any of you able to think for yourself? You have to hire a consultant? You take salaries. Don't take a salary if you're going to hire consultants with their money. And to conduct a market salary survey. We've lost a lot of employees, and, you know, a lot of people don't want to come back to work here for many reasons, so salary isn't the only reason that people don't want to work here and stay here. So $200,000 is a lot of money. All these $200,000, a million here, it adds up. Eight, resolution to replace 2006 Resolution for Market Salary Survey Guidance. Like I said, it's common sense, what's a fair salary, and if you would cut the high salaries at the top, there's a lot of people, they've been here, some of them for 40 years, that are making $200,000. There are a lot of people making over $200,000, some over $300,000. We have a $3 billion budget. You haven't balanced the budget in decades. Okay, nine, ordinance to establish another CIP, capital improvement, project. Flood mitigation, what a joke. Uncontrolled growth, crumbling infrastructure, pump stations that don't work. I mean, anybody that drives around here knows that the roads are terrible. Every time it rains, it floods everywhere. A grant program. And accept and appropriate $803,061 from Virginia Department of Emergency. You know, state money is air tax money. We pay for it. Okay. Flood mitigation measures at qualifying residential properties. Who decides who qualifies? All residents matter. Ten. Ordinance to appropriate $300,000 from the fund balance of the General Fund to provide special event fee offsets during pandemic public health measures. We should not be spending a penny on special events. And, you know, it has nothing to do with me. Whoever's upset up there banging, it's really rude. We don't have the money for special events to fill hotel rooms and sell condos and fill Airbnbs. Okay, eleven. Resolution to authorize the city manager, Mr. Duhany, and execute a mutual aid agreement for emergency fire and emergency medical services with Currituck County, North Carolina. We need to take care of the City of Virginia Beach. Air money and air, you know, if there's an emergency, other cities automatically come to help if there's a real emergency, but we don't need a mutual aid agreement with another state. You're already merging with Norfolk and all these other cities. The homeless shelter, that's one of my pet peeves. You know, in all this weather, y'all don't do anything for the homeless, and you've even sent them away during the pandemic. So I'm opposed, and I hope you figure out who's banging. It's really rude.
Ms. Messner, if you'd just stay there, the mayor will open a public hearing for the planning.
I'm going to open up a public hearing on planning.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of clarification, Ms. Messner, the banging is not coming from this council. I feel a duty to inform you. The banging is coming from your microphone.
Well, then somebody needs to fix the microphone, because I'm not touching it.
Ms. Messner, you signed up on, you did not sign up for number one, you signed up for number two. Three, four, five, seven, eight, and nine. Six is being pulled.
Okay, I have a question with the due process. Why are we jumping around to planning when we haven't finished the ordinances and there's other people here waiting to speak on item five? Why can't we finish one thing at a time? Why is everything all, you know? We should finish ordinances in sequence and then go to, and you should vote on each item separately, not consent agenda.
Planning number two. Planning number two is what you signed up for, the next one, for the consent agenda.
Right, I know, I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Atlantic Park and the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, who the city appoints, and we pay for their high rent at Town Center for various, for street closures, various right-of-ways for assemblage of the dome site project. This has been going on for a couple of years. We've had meetings at the convention center and talked about who had conflicts at the time with Town Bank and Mr. Levinson, with Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority, is a stockholder at Town Bank. How can all of you agree usually on the appointments when these people have direct conflicts unless all of you have some type of conflict also, and you have no problem with it? Yeah, when I've spoken before, let's see. Yeah, there's many areas with uncontrolled growth, and you keep, you keep building unless, you know, I need more information. Mr. Duhany, if you could answer some emails, I'd like information on the Navy's plans, because I'd like to know if the Navy's closing, because they're planning to give some of their land to developers. They need to take care of the Navy and do more things for the military on the base. They shouldn't be, you know, giving away the land. But this is the jet noise and jet crash zones, and the jets already crashed at Mayfair Mews, and there were like 25 crashes over a certain period of time when John Holland was still, you know, investigating for the pilot. Anyway, shouldn't be building in a jet noise and jet crash.
If you can move on to the next item, please, Ms. Messner.
That'll be item, planning item number three.
Okay. Okay, CSA, Virginia Beach LLC, Freedom Land Investment LLC, for modification of conditions, re indoor recreation facility in the Bayside area. Now, the city with their rec centers, which are basically closed right now, limited access, you're competing against all these other places, and some of the ones, like at Lynn Haven Mall, they're open, there's people in there. Their kids aren't in school, but some of these places that you approve, you know, they're open for business all the time. So I'm in opposition to anything being approved until you can take care of funding the police, having enough police, and having enforcement for crime, you know, not for masks and who can be open and who can be closed, but enough police in the city to patrol and take care of everything. Okay, four. Burger Busters, Balboa LLC. I believe that's one of the judges. Special exemption for alternative compliance to add decorative feature on building facade and extend drive-through hours, 29th and Pacific. It says approve May 1, 2018. Things are a little bit different in, you know, since 2018, and as I've stated before, traffic, crime at the oceanfront, everything's out of control, and you shouldn't be approving anything. crime at the oceanfront, everything's out of control, and you shouldn't be approving anything until the pandemic is gone, this isn't an essential need. This is, this is a want for developers. Okay, five. Life in His Word Christian Ministries for conditional use permit. Religious use Indian River Road. It says approval, but now, one of the planning meetings that I went to, one of the last ones I went to, because it was four and a half hours, an hour, at least an hour, was about, you know, a church and the LED light shining in the neighbors and all the traffic, so I'm not happy with who you, who you have for planning and what you approve and all, you know. Okay, six. Six is pulled.
Six is being pulled, correct?
Right, but it's still, it's still on the agenda.
No, ma'am, we'll have a separate hearing, a separate time for this one.
Oh, okay, right. Okay, seven, I'll be glad when this is over. Rosetta Denise and Enchiris Perros LLC, conditional use permit. 20th and Atlantic, 2014 Atlantic Avenue. A lot of people don't come to the beach anymore, but it's non-stop traffic, there is no parking, that's the biggest farce on the planet. And most of the parking, the city lots are used for storage for, for developers, Rudy Inlet, 19th Street. So I oppose this is gonna be more traffic, and, and I'm in opposition. Okay, seven.
You just, no, number seven, you just spoke on, number eight.
You were on number eight.
Right, eight. Okay, I thought there were some short-term rentals on here, okay. Beauty Salon. I don't have a problem with that one. Greg's Horvath, conditional use permit, home occupation. Princess Anne. I, I don't know what that is, but I do know that you're allowing people that have businesses at their home to have all kinds of vehicles there, and it's really a problem for the neighborhood, so I'll see if Ms. Henley has anything to say on that one, thank you.
Mr. Wood, will you oblige us with the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, move for approval under ordinances and resolutions. Item I, one, ordinance to amend section 2-109, city code, Ray temporary pay adjustments, and that's consent for deferral to December 8, 2020. Item two, ordinance to grant a non-exclusive franchise agreement to SEMIS Holdings LLC, Ray install, operate, and maintain network facilities for telecommunications services in the public streets and rights of way. Item three, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a ground lease for approximately 420 square feet of right-of-way known as Atlantic Avenue, Ray placement of the Oceanside Marriott Hotel Monument sign noting that that's consent for indefinite deferral. Item four, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city right-of-way known as Southern Boulevard, the adjacent city property formerly known as Norfolk Southern Rail Line, and a 30-foot city utility easement at 4920 Southern Boulevard. Ray maintain existing 72-inch chain-link fence, chain-link gates, concrete barriers, a gravel area, and two metal tanks. Item six, ordinance to establish a resort management office appropriate 1,176,505 dollars of tourism investment program fund balance, transfer 361,287 dollars and nine FTEs within the 2020-2021 department operating budgets, and authorize six FTEs where facilitate initiatives at the resort area and coordinate city code enforcement. Item seven, ordinance to transfer 200,000 dollars from the General Fund reserved for contingencies to the FY 2020-2021 Human Resources Operating Budget. Ray hire a consultant to conduct a market salary survey. Item eight, resolution to replace the 2006 Resolution, Ray Market Salary Survey Guidance. Item nine, ordinance to establish CIP 100557 Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program Four and accept and appropriate 803,061 dollars from Virginia Department of Emergency Management to CIP 100557, Ray Flood Mitigation Measures at Qualifying Residential Properties. Item 10, ordinance to appropriate 300,000 dollars from the fund balance of the General Fund, Ray provide special event fee offsets during pandemic public health measures. Item 11, resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a mutual aid agreement for emergency fire and emergency medical services with Currituck County, North Carolina.
Open a public hearing on
Planning?
Under planning, item J1, Rita M. Whalen and Michael J. Whalen, the Rita M. Whalen Revocable Trust for variance to section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, Ray recordation of a subdivision plan to construct a single-family dwelling in an adjacent parcel north of 3652 North Landing Road and the Princess Anne District noting Mr. Moss is voting nay. Item two, Atlantic Park Inc. and the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority for street closures, Ray various rights of way for assemblage of dome site property at A, portion of south side of 20th Street between Pacific and Arctic Avenue; B, portion of south side of 20th Street between Pacific and Baltic Avenues; C, portion of west side of Arctic Avenue between 19th and 20th Streets; D, 19th Street between Pacific and Arctic Avenue; E, all alleys within the block surrounded by Arctic and Baltic Avenues and 19th and 20th Streets in the Beach District noting that Mr. Moss is abstaining on that item. Number three, CSA Virginia Beach LLC Freedom Land Investment LLC for modification of conditions, Ray indoor recreation facility at 5070 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Bayside District. Item four, Burger Busters Inc., Balboa LLC, for modification of conditions, Ray special exception for alternative compliance to add decorative features on building facade and extend drive-through hours at 2902 Pacific Avenue in the Beach District. Item three, Life in His Word Christian Ministries, JR Moulton Family LLC for conditional use permit, Ray religious use at Indian River Road between 6620 and 6608 Indian River Road, 509 feet east of Sandra Lane in the Kempsville District noting that Mr. Jones is abstaining on that item. Item seven, Rosetta Denise Secante and Enchiris Perros LLC for conditional use permit, Ray assembly use at 2014 Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District. Item eight, Kendall Teague Stewart Investments LLC for conditional use permit, Ray Beauty Salon at 613 North Lynn Haven Road in the Lynn Haven District. Item nine, Greg Horvath, Greg S. and Carolyn M. Horvath for conditional use permit, Ray home occupation at 2321 Vaughn Road in the Princess Anne District, so move, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second? Okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Gens?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye, and I'd like to read my disclosures.
Go right ahead, Mr. Moss.
I just, this is just a partial of why I'm abstaining on item J2, the dome site. Among the properties that may be acquired for this project is one that would have a foreseeable direct or indirect benefit of detriment to Dominion Power, also known as Dominion Energy, and I have a personal interest in Dominion Energy. As discussed in the attached opinion of the Commonwealth attorney, I also have an interest in a separate corporation that receives income from a parcel that is within the possible footprint of the dome site. If that parcel is acquired for the project, I will forthwith disclose my interest in that separate corporation, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm abstaining on item J5 because I have a financial interest in property adjacent to the application.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, we're gonna move on to
Mayor, I'm sorry, I haven't finished the voting yet.
Oh, my.
Uh, Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, approve the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood noting the abstentions of Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Moss and Mr., and Councilmember Moss's nay vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolution, item number five, resolution to establish a May 31 memorial committee, authorize the city manager to solicit proposals from two third-party consultants and transfer 115,000 dollars from the General Fund Reserve for Contingencies and FY 2020-21 Cultural Fields Operating Budget, Ray establishment and, and dedicate a permanent memorial, do we have speakers?
Yes, sir, the first speaker is Barbara Messner, after Ms. Messner. And Jason Nixon will be the second speaker. Ms. Messner?
Okay. This isn't the first time you've talked about a memorial committee and misusing tragedy funds for other items, including real estate and employee salaries. And the fact that nothing's been done is, is a horrible insult to all, all the victims and their families. And not one of you showed up for the first anniversary to pay your respects. So, um, a, a third-party consultant to pay taxpayer money 115,000 is outrageous. And on the financing, I asked Mr. Ramias about audits, I haven't seen any lately, we still have 2.4 million dollar loan to a private nonprofit that's never built anything in the Princess Anne District. So you need to honor, respect, and remember, and let the victim families decide what type of memorial and where they want it, you don't need to spend money. It's their families, and we support what they want. And these are the victim families, you didn't even have their names before. And Mr. Cox, you still don't have a sign for him at the post office. Mr. Rapp, Kate Nixon, Alexander Guzeth, Missy Langer, Mary Louise Gale, Robert Bobby Williams, Tara Welch Gallagher, Mr. Nettleton, Joshua Hardy, he was another one of the, Joshua Hardy and Kate Nixon were some of the heroes. You honor other people, but not, not the heroes. Lakita Brown, Ryan Keith Cox, and Mr. Snelling, so thank you.
Next speaker is Jason Nixon.
Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, thank you for having me up here. I'm all for the memorial, we've talked about it, I've, I've sat down with Lauren Heath, we discussed it. I don't think we need consultants, I don't think that we need to know a memorial how Ohio did it, or how Texas did it. You know, they did, there's a six months, it's been two years almost, we need to get a memorial up and going. I have an idea of how to do it, I've, I've approached Lauren, and we've discussed it. We need to have self-identity. That's what Virginia Beach is. We don't need someone from out of the town, out of state, coming in and telling us how to do a memorial. I wanted to do the King Neptune with the smashed turtles on the ground of 12 pieces, because it represents several things. First, it represents the way Virginia Beach got rocked that day, that was our 9/11. Second, it represents the 12 victims that were killed that day, the 12 pieces on the ground represent the 12 victims died. Third, it represents the 12 families that were shattered that day. It's a perfect memorial, I'd like to have a clamshell walk around it with each individual person and accolades and saying what they're remembered for. They're, they're, you know, the loved ones can go there and memorize for them, you know, memorialize it, my, my children would love something like that. You know, my first option was a tear-down building too, it's hollowed ground. How could you put a police station, headquarters, in that building? I don't think any cop, any police officer in the world wants to walk through those hallways listening to cell phones go off. Because that's all they did. And they, they get PTSD, we, you know, they, they all, they're all messed up. I've talked to several cops about it. Honestly, you guys don't need 115,000 dollars to hire consultants. Why? Are we not, is Virginia Beach not capable, professional enough to do this? My wife was a civil engineer with a PE. Don't you think the other civil engineers in Building Two would make that feel like it was an honor for them to help design and construct a represented memorial that, you know, it, it has feeling? It's somber, and it's tragic, because that's what happened, we had a tragic day that day. And we cannot forget any of this, I don't care about the tourism, I don't care about any of the stuff you guys want to keep putting money into. Do this first. This is Virginia Beach, this is our, our 9/11. Nobody else's. We don't need outside people coming in and getting paid consultant fees. That's not what we're about. Why can't we come up with our own, our own plans? I mean, the city manager, you're, you're a PE, right? You're not a PE? Okay, well, professional engineering degree, it takes a lot to get it. Those people work their butts off to get those things. The city, the city employees got their raises taken away, why? Their, their families depend on that, my family depended on that when Kate was alive. It's not right that y'all do that. Take the money and give it to them, but let's build a memorial, the money's there. I guess my time's up, I could speak for two hours, honestly. And actually, I'm gonna testify tomorrow in the Senate, so, thanks.
Thank you, Jason.
The next speaker is Via Webex Debbie Barado, Ms. Barado, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments.
Yes, hi, I am here. First of all, this is my first opportunity to speak to anybody. I've emailed hundreds of emails, which you all know, and without any replies, obviously. I would like to ask a question, if that's appropriate. The 115,000, does that include the complete construction and finished product of the permanent memorial?
Ms. Barado, this is an opportunity for public comment, if you would like to continue your comments, thank you.
So you don't want me to ask a question? With that being said, obviously, that just proves once again how disrespected we are as family members. None of the Virginia government has recognized us. You treat us as the criminals, and we are not the criminals. The criminals are inside that building. We all know it. The facts are there. It's just putting them out there. I don't agree with 115,000 dollars when families can be the ones to provide ideas. You're spending money that is unnecessary, you're, according to what I'm seeing, you're already 300 billion dollars or 3 billion dollars in debt, which is ridiculous, I don't live there, I'm not a resident, so that's not a concern of mine. My concern is the permanent memorial and families being treated, as you said, Mayor, in the beginning with respect. And I have yet to hear the word transparency or see transparency since the day of May 31 that you promised.
Mayor, the only other speaker is Lauren Heath, and she was questions only, so I'm not sure if you all have questions for Ms. Heath.
Any questions for Ms. Heath?
No additional speakers, sir.
I usually, you know, withhold my comments. I usually, you know, withhold my comments to last, but I think it's important for Mr. Nixon, Ms. Barado, and, you know, the other families to know. You know, over the past year-plus, I've been involved in the discussions of the memorial. And if I could explain that, you know, at the anniversary of the memorial, due to the COVID, we had to put restrictions on attendance because we didn't know how many people were going to come up, and we did our best to put together a heartfelt, sincere, empathetic tribute to the victims and their families. Yes, the events of 5/31 of 2019 rocked the foundation of this city, especially with the families, the victims, and all the people that were in the building at the time. It's a day we'll never forget. But having been involved in a lot of the discussions subsequent about the memorial, we wanted to give some time for, you know, healing of the families. And I know it's tough, because every family, you know, during time of tragedy responds differently. And, but we wanted to give it a fair amount of time because we really thought that it was essential to have the participation of the families involved. And this is not making an excuse, Jason, or to any other of the families, but the COVID has thrown roadblocks into many, many things that this city has done in terms of things we would like to do, and it just slowed down a lot of things. But perhaps, you know, we didn't want to make any decisions going forward until we felt it was appropriate to approach the families going forward. And perhaps one of the considerations may be, you know, maybe several recognitions, but we're building a new building next door. But we didn't want to presuppose that something would go in there yet, because we didn't want to poll the families yet. So we got some decisions. It's going to be an open book, and it's going to be an inclusive process. And unfortunately, you know, given the emotions and magnitude of this and all of the people involved, we're going to try to do this in the best, most caring and empathetic way. But the one thing I will tell you that, you know, from the perspective I've seen, that, you know, this city intends to embrace the victims and their families and all concerned in perpetuity. And if it weren't for the COVID, my guess, we would be ahead of where we are right now. But, you know, we're dealing with the reality. We had to deal with the reality on 5/31. But once again, if I can give you my assurance, and I think I can speak on behalf of this body, that we are with you. And we feel your grief individually, and we share your grief as a city. And going forward, we intend to do that with dignity and inclusion. So I hope you don't mind me sticking in, and, you know, forgive me for going first. But does any other councilperson have an observation? Okay, at this point, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Could we call for the vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell's absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, you have approved Resolution Number Five, establish a May 31 memorial committee, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And I guess we go on to planning item, was it planning item six, Mr. Vice Mayor? Okay. And that is Brandon and Samantha Hathaway, and Brandon Hathaway et al. for a conditional use permit, Ray, outside recreation facility at 5025, you know, colon.
The applicant, Samantha Hathaway?
We do agree to all of the terms as we discussed in the planning commission. We just wanted to ask if it was possible to keep up. We do have two walls, so two of the ends are open. It's not an enclosed structure. We were just checking to see if that was something that could be open for discussion. Our neighbor who, their property line backs up to the batting cage is actually here, and he is in favor of it. So it was just something we thought that we just would go ahead and ask. If not, obviously, we've already agreed to it. We understand. We just thought we'd throw it out there just in case.
Mr. Jones, did you have a response to that?
I'm sure. I couldn't pick up what you were saying, ma'am. Could you?
So our batting cage, it is covered, and there are two walls, and the two ends are completely open. We were told from the planning commission that we would need to take down one of those walls, and we were just checking to see if we could keep both of them up. Since the two ends are open, it's not an enclosed structure, so it's not an indoor recreation facility. It is outdoor. Two ends are open. We were just checking to see if we could also keep an additional wall, two walls up, instead of taking one of those down.
Instead of taking one of the ends down, you mean?
No. The ends are already open.
Okay.
So the two sides are both up, and we were told that we had to take one of them down. And we were checking to see if we could keep them both up, for one structural reasons, because it does have a roof, and then also because since the two ends are open, it's not going to be enclosed. It's not an indoor facility.
Let me see what our planning director says in response to your request.
Do I go sit?
Mr. Jones, the question is, is what we would consider indoor recreation versus outdoor recreation. We've had a number of questions when it deals with that, and what would be considered indoors for a building, which typically would be that it had to be open on three sides. It would be considered outdoor, similar to a porch. That's where the determination came from, from zoning. We've used that, we've used that to be consistent with the other determinations that we've done for similar structures. Indoor recreation is not permitted in the residential zoning districts, but outdoor recreation is. So, which is why we had, why there was a line drawn between outdoor versus indoor recreation and what that line would be.
Thank you, Bobby. Ma'am, you heard what Mr. Tahan said?
Yes.
So that you will be in conformity with the code. I'm going to leave it the way it is.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have additional speakers. Sorry. Mr. Johnson?
Mayor? City Council. How are you guys, everybody doing tonight? I'm the property behind this property here. We share a property line together. This structure, I would like to ask you guys to amend this and allow them to keep both walls on there for structural strength. I spoke to my brother, who's been a carpenter for over 30 years, and he's like, that's just a bad idea because of the direction of the wind and everything that comes in. You're just asking for that to get ripped apart. So then I called a friend of mine that's an engineer, and he also said, that's a bad idea. You need those two walls for structural integrity. So I'm all for this. They improved an existing structure that has been there for many years, and so they've improved it as far as, you know, recreational things. It's just personal recreation for them. They're not a business. They're not, you know, soliciting people to come over and use their batting cage or anything like that. It's a personal-use facility. And I would just like to ask you guys to amend this application and allow these folks to keep both walls up and keep the structure as it is. Thank you.
Barbara Messner?
She just left.
Oh. No other speakers.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move approval of the application as it stands. I appreciate Mr. Johnson's comments and the support as a neighbor, but I think we do have to support the code, so I'm going to move for approval as it stands.
Motion for approval. Do we have a second? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell's absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, you approved the application of Brandon and Samantha Hathaway.
And I do believe that completes the agenda. Okay, if we can move on to appointments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make the following nominations. To the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Board, Norbert Dreps, David France, Casey Jones, June Barrett McDaniel, Michael Steyer, and Janie Young. To the Community Services Board, Lori Bridges, Joyce Harvey, Carla Heseltine, Molly Trask, and Susanna Urosky. To the Green Ribbon Committee, Brian Large. To the Health Services Advisory Board, Jackie Cotton. To the Historic Preservation Commission, Jennifer Brown Estes, Sharon Felton, and Mac Rawls. To the Open Space Advisory Committee, Lawrence Horvath. To the Public Library Board, Caitlin Burkett. That's the nominations. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, can we call the roll, please?
Was there one for the Resort Advisory Committee I thought unmarked? I'm sorry.
You are correct. Keith Ireland to Resort Advisory Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you for the catch.
Are you ready for the vote?
We are ready for the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucy?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye, but nay on the rack.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell's absent. Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to zero, noting Mr. Moss's nay vote on the rack appointment. The appointment is as read.
Okay, does anybody have anything unfinished business? If I could bring up, you all got packages with a Naval Air Station Oceana future base design. At this point, would anybody be adverse if the city manager and I went ahead with the non-binding letter and got it to you prior to, you know, us dispersing it?
Are we going to see it before you sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that be okay, Mr. Dahany? You know, getting the letter out and let them look at it first?
I'll work with the city attorney's office to get something prepared to send for council for their review consideration.
Yeah, and we will have it sent out. But just to make sure, you know, per the council's request last week, you remember to get copies. I don't know if you met it, but, you know, the Navy is on a little bit of a timeline, you know, in trying to, you know, get this expedited. So, you know, perhaps, you know, if we can get the letter out and get it for your approval prior to us being sending it, would that be okay?
Yes, as long as we're not making any commitments to operate her base.
I understand it's non-binding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, you need to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah. Oh, wait a minute. Any new business? See, there was new business. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, and we're going to get ready for public comment and non-agenda items coming up.